...of July 16th, 2019. Before we get going, we received a notice from Cumberland Farms requesting a continuance. So is there anyone here for the public hearing for Cumberland Farms? Okay. I just didn't want you to waste your time waiting through the meeting for it. We have some bills and warrants going through. Does everybody get a chance to look at them?
Yes.
When did Commerce Way, is that done a while ago?
Some of them are...
Yeah, I'm talking...
I'm sorry.
When did Commerce Way?
That, okay, that is a peer review invoice. That's Alnylam. So when that project was approved, we had a peer review done to help with the site review of that project as it's being constructed. So Beta is the peer review engineering firm.
So this is an invoice going back to 2016? Wasn't... You got... Oh, those are payments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, those are just payments. So no, this is work that they have been doing. Right.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify too, when you see the term on a number of those, which is encumbrance, that means the bills, you know, we're paying it in the fiscal year 20, but they were actually incurred in fiscal year 19. And so we're writing that on there to notify our accounting office that it's to come out of 19's budget. They were the ones who advised me on it. You'll also see a bill that's a prior year, which means it actually came out of fiscal year 18, and it was for the Mass Municipal Association and advertisement for my position. So that's, I can't explain why that wasn't paid a year ago, but it came back to us. This happens from time to time. We'll get bills that...
[laughing].
So on the record, you're not leaving?
Yeah.
You can speak right into the...
I hope not. No, I love it here, I don't want to go.
Obviously, we can't afford to re-advertise, so...
You're stuck.
You're stuck, Paul, you can't go anywhere.
Okay. Do we have any question, any further questions on the bills? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we have the minutes for the June 18th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look those over as well? When the additions, changes, corrections?
For the, out of transparency, was it worth putting in the minutes in regards to the executive session, that minutes will be released at a later date for this or something like that? I don't know if that's necessary, or...
We would, I believe we would have to talk to council before we could even say when they would be released. It would be...
Not a specific date, but just a minutes for this period will be released at a later date. That's it.
I personally think that's kind of a given as far as releasing the executive minutes.
Okay.
If anyone else disagrees, then...
Okay.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections, additions? All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. We have an A and R endorsement for 3335 West Main Street.
Craig Segunowski, Rim Engineering. Gerald Freshman, the owner of the property, was up this weekend for his son's wedding, but had to go back to Florida yesterday, so he's not here tonight. This is a property he's owned since 1993. It has two businesses on it. The building in Lot 1 is currently CVS, and the building in Lot 2 has Ace Hardware as well as Bog Iron Brew Company. And I believe it's the Bog Iron Brew Company that's looking to purchase Lot 2. The reason for the odd property line is CVS in their lease agreement has, the line was drawn around the landscaped island, so we were asked to locate the edge of pavement, and that became the property line. It's all, the entire property, except for the rare land, which is a drainage, has been, is pretty much paved. You come in, an entrance near CVS and an entrance near Ace Hardware, and at this time, people can pass through from side to side. And the intention is through deeds, easements, that the attorneys will prepare, that'll continue. There's no intention to block traffic from going from one building to the next. And also, Mr. Freshman has since 1993 has had a deal with Northeastern Savings Bank for the same reason. People can come in from one parking lot into the next. He's preparing documents that will allow that to continue.
There is an existing curb cut for what's now Lot 2?
There is an existing curb cut on that lot, between the building and the pavement line.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
Is there any public comments?
Do we have?
Do we need to do that, or not?
I don't think so. Do we need public comment?
We don't need to.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments on this? No? All right. So I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we're going to sign some copies of this here.
Thank you.
Do we need to sign again?
The Mylar Plus 2.
All right, so these pink ones were, we give this back to you, so we don't sign those.
It was continued.
No, this one here.
Right. She's here. So if that gets approved, then I'll start working tomorrow. I'll get the decision.
Is that Joe's signature?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
The one with the O in the end.
That's Joe's.
Continue. You can do it out of...
They give you the whole line, Joe. You could sign on the whole line.
Actually, I don't matter. I won't be recognized.
On the agenda, we have two public hearings, as I mentioned initially. Special Permit 486 for Cumberland Farms. We had that listed as the second one on tonight, but I thought we'd skip ahead so we can vote on continuing that. So I'll entertain a motion to continue.
We don't have any dates yet.
We don't have any dates yet. Absolutely, you're right. Well, they asked for the later date in August. So let's, you know what, let's do these dates first, just in case we have to...
We're going to do the 6th and the 20th? Since we're, since our last meeting in July is next week, the 23rd, so we're skipping a week, so 6th and then the 20th?
Is that...
That works.
That's okay with me.
Those dates are fine, but I cannot make the 6th, so if we can extend this hearing until the 20th, that would be helpful.
And that's what they're requesting, is the later...
They're going to request the further. Okay.
And Paul, I know that one of the takeaways, they were going to do another traffic study during the school hours, adjusting the time, and I think it was between 2:00 and 3:00 instead of whatever it was.
Right.
And the meeting was like the week before the school got out, and it was already after the seniors were complete at the high school, which is a big part of the traffic between those hours. So I don't know what their plans were and when they were going to do another traffic study, but you may want to just mention that to them, because...
Right.
They may want to wait until September now, since we're already at the end of August, if they haven't done the traffic.
More than likely, it'll be continued again after that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, I don't want to say for sure, but...
Yeah, me too.
I would think it would be continued.
Right. Those points were brought up at the meeting, so we'll, they're responsible to reply.
There has been a determination that it is in Zone 3, and that...
Yeah, we want to, we want to limit the discussion. Yeah.
So this is on the 20th?
Yeah, right now, we're discussing meeting dates. So the 6th and the 20th?
Just a thought. We've got the remand of Fairland Farms on the 23rd, which I assume isn't going to wrap up in one night. So if it's going to be continued to the next meeting, Kevin won't be able to be here. I'm going to miss the 23rd. I'll commit to watching the video, but I just, I just put that out there. What we want instead be the 13th and 27th, again, I'm just...
I can't make the 13th.
I can't make the 27th.
[laughing]. I mean, we could shift it a day, the week of the 12th, I won't, I won't be in town.
Nor will I.
That seems like a bad week altogether.
Yeah. I could do the 6th, 20th, 27th. I could even shift it a day if needed, within that time, you know, within those weeks, I can, I can do all that.
Yeah, so if Kevin misses the 6th, then he would have to watch the video, and then couldn't miss anymore.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have the form that you would need to fill out, and Joe too, you know.
Stick with the original?
Yeah, so 6th and the 20th, that seems to be the majority. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to continue. Special Permit 486 to August 20th.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Frank used to be so quick with those seconds. All right. And now we'll open the public hearing for Special Permit 47. Edith Reed Conservation Land. And we have Jennifer Carlini.
Hello.
Hi, thank you.
The last meeting, you asked for some additional detail, so you have a packet of information that was submitted on the 10th, where we have the estimated occupancy for each of the properties, and a map that shows the location of the camping area, and any fire pits. Did you want me to go through each one, or are you happy with the map?
Does anyone have questions on the maps, or is it, does anybody like her to go through them each, or?
Nope.
Okay.
So then the other thing they gave you was a photograph of one of, like a three-person tent on one of the platforms, just so you could get a sense of the scale. They gave a revised camping application form to try to include some of the comments from Abutters. So some of those are acknowledgement about the fire safety, camp fire safety requirements, live no trace policy, no pets, no alcohol, smoking or drugs, and acknowledgement of the safety deposit and the use agreements, just to make sure everybody understands what they're expected to be doing. And I did speak with the Board of Health, and so an annual inspection would be needed if people are going to use the kitchen. If it were just the microwave, they wouldn't, and a refrigerator, they wouldn't have to do that, but since there is a stove, and I think scouts typically make cookies and brownies and things for their meetings, so a Board of Health permit would be required each month, I mean, each year.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
There's obviously a significant amount of property we have in this town that's dedicated to conservation use. How much utilization do you have of these projects, of these properties over the summer?
I pulled out the camping applications that I've had recently. I shouldn't even say recently. These are the ones that I have on file, so 2019, there were 10 people camping on the island. Again, on the island in May, there were 13 people. September, 20 people. Rose Farm had 25 in 2011. 13 people for the islands, again. Johnson Acres had 2 people. Islands had 1 person. 20 scouts. Johnson Acres, Towne Forest had 20 people, 13 people.
That's over the course of the summer?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, we don't have very often, and there's only a few a year.
Two questions. Is, what other uses can the town, you know, are those, I know there are conservation restrictions on those properties, I mean, what kind of use are they limited to? Are they limited to camping, anything else that's allowed on those properties?
Anything that's designated as conservation property is passive recreation only, so hiking, mountain biking, you know, regular walking, nature study, fishing, camping, nothing that's motorized, nothing that's a timed sport or a line. So an active recreation use would be a ball field that has lines on it, and a referee, and a timed game. If it's just a pickup game out in a field, then that would be passive recreation for conservation.
Many other things, a lot of things come up with cost, and the cost of doing anything. Do we charge anything for the use of these campsites?
There will be a cost, yeah. I haven't figured out the price yet. Typical camping is, you know, $20 for a tent site.
And is there, what about the, putting in some security deposit or something like that to guarantee?
There will be a security deposit, a fee structure, and the requirement for application and approval.
Has that been set yet, or are you looking?
Not set yet, still working on it. So you just got the draft of the revised application form, and I'll be comparing other campsites in the area to see the cost, security deposit, and if there are any other cleaning fees or anything like that. Yeah.
All right, do we have any questions from the board? Any further questions? Seems like you hit everything we asked for here. I do like the five gallon bucket for water next to the fire pits.
Yeah, I read about the buckets, and we'll make a laminated sheet, and we'll tape it to all the buckets, and there'll be a little post next to the campsite with the rules again, just so everybody knows.
When it's established, could you provide this board with that cost structure for us?
Sure.
You have it, security deposit and the cost structure that you use. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? All right. We'll open it up to the, the audience. Does anyone, anyone in the audience have any questions? Yeah, come on up.
Who's going to...
You can come on up and...
So who's going to enforce all these rules and regulations?
Just, if you would, just let us know your name and...
Dewey Carter, One Ellis Road. So who's going to enforce all these, this list of regulations?
What I'll do, and I apologize, I should have said this in advance, we'll ask her questions, and then have her come up and any other questions you have.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So come on, then go back to that.
Sure, unless you have more questions, then we can get them all at once.
That's my question.
Okay.
Anyone renting the property or asking to camp on the property has to be at least 21. They'll have to sign an acknowledgement form that they understand all of the rules and regulations, and then when they have left the site, I will have to do a site inspection to make sure they've complied, and whether or not we return the safety deposit.
And police and fire will be notified as well?
Police and fire will be notified as well, thanks.
All right, do we have any further questions?
Martha Stanford, 73 North Worcester Street, I'm in Abutter to the Edith Reed property. And I've lived there all my life, so the Girl Scouts have been excellent neighbors. We should all have neighbors like that. You never see them, you never hear them, you watch the buses go by, life is good. I'm really concerned, as you know from the last two meetings, about everyday camping. I'm all for the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, but I have a problem with anybody going out there lighting fires. It seems that it's a foregone conclusion that it's going to happen. And if that's the case, I think we have to be real careful about what we do and what we provide for campsites and fire pits and all that kind of thing. And they're not ready to go yet. So I think at the very least, the camping part of this, for other than Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, be set aside until a later date, and since how the permit is not renewable as I thought it could be at a later date, it could be modified. Maybe you can add something to it later on. In a, a look through the internet at other conservation commissions and their sites, most of them would designate one or two, possibly three of their properties for camping, and they had prepared sites, fire pits, clearings, everything set up so it was very organized and orderly. And we're not there yet for that. A lot of them, I won't say a lot of them, some of them use the wording, overnight camping is allowed for youth groups and scouts with adequate supervision. Say nothing about individuals, citizens, and that kind of thing. I would love to see that happen. I think if you took the Edith Reed property and you allowed the scouts to use that now, they would clean it up. The scouts were really anxious for the town to buy that so that they could use it again. It even mentions it in the town report, that they hope to provide camping and a meeting place for the Girl Scouts. Makes sense. I think, I don't know if for a fact, but I think they'd be happy to work towards preparing that area for the town. To have camping at so many sites, I think is a big undertaking, right out of the chute. I think, I think you should pick one. Edith Reed is a nice site, there's no question, it's the nicest campsite I think we've got, but develop it. Put the efforts and the money into that one project. Allow camping there for the scouts. Next year in the spring, look at it again, see what we can do. There's a lot of maintenance that's going to go on with this, with the clearing of the land, the annual clearing of the debris and the brush and the leaves to keep the fire pits clean and the camp areas clean. It's going to be a lot of work. I don't think our conservation department has the budget or the manpower to maintain that at this point. Maybe they will in the future, but right now, I think we're, we're strapped. I wish I had had this packet to look at earlier than tonight to see what was going on there. I don't know, is it that you discussed a season for the camping? A lot of them seem to go mid-April to Columbus Day, before the foliage starts to drop. They limit the number of nights someone can camp there, so you don't get people, you know, living out there. Most of the ones I saw were like two nights. They let campers with a minimum, you know, maximum of two nights. She's already come up with a total number. I just, I just don't think we're ready for this. I really don't. I don't think we can, I don't think we can do it yet. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jen, if you'd like to respond to...
My only comments are that we already have camping on those properties, and they've been, nothing is new. They're, they're campsites where people have been camping for the last 20 years that I've been here, and we cannot discriminate against people who are not scouts. It is public land, we receive state funding for it, and it is open to the public.
And was there, did you mention previously a limit to the number of nights?
I think there was a limit.
I know we talked about it, but I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
There was a limit of two nights, something I read.
Requested camping dates. Camping will be permitted for more than two nights.
Okay.
And if you have like a season in mind, I think, I think that was a good comment too. Is there normally a season in which you see that people want to camp? Is it worth kind of putting bookends on it, so to speak?
Yeah, we can do that.
You don't have to answer right now, maybe some food for thought, but it might be good to, to that point, kind of put bookends on it.
It would typically, it could be April or May through November.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how many...
Because we close down the camp, and we, we have to shut the water off and...
Yeah.
Prepare it and all that.
Winterize it.
Yep.
Do you have a general idea, I mean, other than the, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, of how many campers you might actually get? I mean, did you have any...
I don't, I can only go by the applications that I've already got on other properties. The vast majority of them are scout troops and youth groups, and every once in a while, there's one or two people who want to camp.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Real quick question for you. In the layouts here, it looks like there's the fire ring indicators that shows a count of four on Edith Reed and two on Johnson Acres?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the limited today? And is there any plan to expand those to additional rings? And what would the process if you do? Or is it as-is?
I think four was the max that we had looked at for Edith Reed. There are two there now, but it makes more sense to separate them and provide a little more space between the campsites, so you're not having 20 people trying to cook on one small camp, campfire.
So it would be like...
Ellen Johnson Acres already has those fire pits.
Okay. But that would be the limitation to the number of fire rings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, typically, we'd have one per site, but the way it's laid out, we, we can make it work with four instead of eight.
I think you had mentioned, it might be Rose Farm behind the JCS, that it was, it's kind of, it's overgrown now with poison ivy.
Yeah.
Do you have any concerns with liability? Because if there's a lot of poison ivy, that could be a real hazard, and if people are not aware of it...
No, before, before anybody went out there, the field would have to be mowed. Yeah.
Okay. How about liability in general? Is that covered at all?
Covered under the town's insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have more questions from the audience?
Hi, Ellen Valentine, 71 North Worcester Street. I'm sorry, my head's spinning after getting this update, which I guess was passed out July 10th, and I, I believe that's what you said, Jennifer. And I wish that all the Abutters had received this, because it, it gives a lot more detail as to what's actually going to go on there. I feel like the public really hasn't been informed that much as to the progress and moving forward, and what the actual situation is out here. I don't know where to start. I have so many questions and so many comments, and I don't want to take your whole evening on... I really like and appreciate the fact that Arthur Stenford did a lot of research in how other towns handle these things. I also had mentioned at the June meeting that Heather Graff and I were gonna work together and try to work with Jennifer to maybe allocate some funds at a town meeting. So we would try to work out something for an article or warrant on the town, town meeting warrant. To fund a supervisory position as to like a field agent. It's now more imperative than ever, like looking at, you know, having other sites. I'm, I'm looking at the Rose Farm, and Jennifer, I guess I would ask you is, you said there's been camping there for years. Now, that's in spite of the fact that there was no camping allowed on any, any property, conservation property, it was all zoned for no camping. So camping was allowed, but when you say there's always been camping, it's mostly been, you said, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, right? So you have a few people, you have a few people that would apply for personal camping. So I just wonder how, how many people in the past have requested a permit to say camp on Rose Farm where the fields are overgrown, they're not mown anymore, the, the fields are closing in with brush, they're not attended to now because there's massive amounts of minibikes out there that have torn up the property. And when we talk about things like, oh, there'll be fire buckets, well, having lived there my entire life, anything you put out there disappears or is destroyed. And so if you have a designated fire bucket at the Rose Farm field and hope that someone will fill it and use it, well, they're gonna have to go down to the river and find that and get water in it, or bring water in, and I don't know about you, but human nature that I've witnessed, most people aren't that conscientious. And thereby you're placing the abutters at risk with fires. Now, Rose Farm, the field where the Boy Scouts used to camp, which is designated on this map, is right next to our farm fields where we raise hay for our livestock. And the Boy Scouts used to camp out there, and I don't recall them having fires. Now, this says cooking fires are not allowed if there's not a designated fire pit. But they can use backpacking cooking stoves such as jet boil or MSR unit only. Now, I don't know what that is, because I don't camp, but anything where there's fire, or the fact that even though we're not allowing smoking, who's gonna monitor that people aren't smoking? And now that pot is legal, people will be smoking pot out there if they can't bring alcohol in, and who's to monitor that they don't bring alcohol in? Now, as Arthur said, it would be nice if we could just allow youth groups with adult supervision, because then we wouldn't have this issue of bringing alcohol in, people smoking. We really need this to be monitored. So, once again, Heather and I are gonna work, we have to meet with some town officials, we wanna go over budgets. Heather and I spoke today, she's been meeting, I think she met with a town clerk, and they said that Recreation Department has people that they hire to take out trash, to clean bathrooms. So maybe when we go forward to try to get some budgetary considerations for someone to monitor, we can work with those departments, and maybe it will be one full-time person to monitor, you know, Recreation and Rose Farm and Edith Reed. And just to keep up, because Jennifer doesn't have a full-time secretary, she's writing grants a lot, and she's doing office work. I know she told me she hasn't been out to Rose Farm in a very long time, that was last year at our meeting, and so I don't think there's enough supervision already. And now we're inviting fires and groups of 24 people out there, you're looking at mayhem, possibly. Not saying it's gonna happen, but we have to be prepared that, we have to take care of the situation so that it does not happen. And I know there's some abutters here from the Anna Way area, they're very close, they directly about, we directly about, and we're really concerned about just vandalism and things not being supervised, so please, if you can consider this. We were gonna work to get this on the fall town meeting, but due to the fact of the amount of research we have to do and discussion with town officials, and job descriptions and salary recommendations, it's probably gonna not happen until the spring, the spring, fall, a spring town meeting. And, and basically that's when the camping season will start up, so please, just think about this, please, as if you were an abutter, because I don't think you'd want to see a fire or vandalism or neglect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Mrs. Valentine read that if there's no campfire pit there now, they cannot have a fire there. So Rose Farm doesn't have any fire pits, their fires are not allowed. The Islands, Town Forest, those areas that they don't have fire pits now, their campfires will not be permitted. A jet boil, you basically have, it's like, it's barely the size of my hand, a propane tank, and it fits onto a metal ring, and you put a pot on it. That's it, you can boil water, that's all you can do with it. So that would be permitted for people to, you know, to use oatmeal, whatever. Not cooking a whole lot. For Rose Farm, the Boy Scouts had been in, been there in the past, they haven't been in there a while, but since this is a camping permit for all of the properties, we wanted to make sure that, once we were able to mow the fields and get that area prepared again, that they could camp there. I don't anticipate anybody asking to camp, and they wouldn't be allowed to camp there if it wasn't actually ready. Anybody camping has to be 21 and over, and I, I personally don't feel that adults need to be supervised. I don't want anybody sitting there watching me when I'm camping or, or doing anything else either, and I'm sure most people don't want to have someone just sort of staring at them while they're there. I understand what you're, what you're asking for, and I'm, I appreciate all the efforts you guys are putting into trying to get the caretaker into the budget, and I would still work with you for the fall town meeting, because if camping is allowed, we're looking at April and June, and that is this fiscal year. So that's something we would need to try to accommodate, April through June. And so we will, I continue to work on improving that budget for the fall town meeting.
So when the applications come in, they go directly to you?
Correct.
And you're, as far as approving them, if the site is not ready?
It won't be approved, if it's not ready, yeah.
Just a couple of questions. Have you reached out to either boys or Girl Scouts? I know there are Eagle Scout projects, whether there's been any interest, or whether you can develop any interest to do some cleanup, to do some, you know, brush cutting or whatever?
Yeah, I have 10 volunteers coming tomorrow morning.
That, that may solve some of this. And when do you plan on actually starting?
Not until I actually have a permit. I mean, I was trying to put enough effort into it to have, have everybody get the amount of information they need, but not put so much information and so much detail into it until I actually have the permit approval. So it's gonna be a little bit, it's gonna be at least another month or two before I've got all of that finalized, before anybody would be able to do that, and depending on the time of year.
Because there's no way of knowing how much, you know, until you establish what the, the fee will be, but one of the things can be done at, at the next town meeting is establish a revolving account, so that those proceeds can be used.
I've already done that. I already have a revolving fund for, for this property, so when people rent the, rent the campground or rent the lodge, that money is specifically going into maintenance and use of the property itself, it doesn't go to the general fund, so that's already established.
Are people still going out to those properties now without permits?
People are going out to properties now without permits, yeah. And without payment, so.
With our granting a special permit for all of these sites, do you still retain the flexibility or of not allowing them to use the site? And so you could start off, and given the limited demand for it, even though you're approved for six sites, let's say, you can, you, I want to make sure you have the discretion to cut back and say, we're only, this year we're only using four of those sites, and we, you know, because of, in your discrep, I don't want somebody coming in saying, is approved, why can't, why are you not giving me this site?
We can do that. Chapter 40, Section 8C gives the Conservation Commission the ability to create rules and regulations for their own property, and we can set the, the limits on which properties are ready to be rented and which ones aren't ready. We could certainly do that.
Do we need to, so you don't need anything from us in terms of the permit? I just wonder, the permit being out there and saying you've got a permit, and you're saying, this week I can go here, but he won't be able to go to that same site?
No, I don't, I don't think you need to do that, I think we just need to advertise these two, one or two properties are available for camping at the moment, and then when the other properties are ready, then they show up on the form as available.
Good.
Do we have any further questions from the audience?
Jennifer mentioned that we couldn't discriminate against groups, and my position was, could you let the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and there was another, youth groups? There are other towns that do that. So I don't know why we couldn't, the town of Boxford here, in their, on their webpage, it says, "Organized camping for organized youth and scout groups is allowed at the Hartwell Town Forest at the discretion of the commission." And there are others that say groups with adequate adult supervision. I just find it hard to believe that we can't control that in town, that we have to let everybody camp there. And if that's the case, if we do have to let everybody camp there, then I think we should limit, oh, I said that, limit the number of places that we conduct this, and put our efforts to that.
Thank you. Jen?
Just one more thing, the grant agreement specifically says that you cannot discriminate against even people from out of state from using the property, it has to be open to the public. And other towns are basing their decisions on whether they got the same grant, or whether the land was donated, or whether they purchased it on their own. Each property, like your permits and conservation permits, is viewed on a case-by-case basis, so they may not be uniform in who's allowed to camp there and, and the rules and regulations for each property. It's, everything's case-by-case.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Can I just state your name and your address?
I'm Thomas Jordan, 12 Anna Way. Question is, and, you know, co-towing on the, on the topic of folks or groups that would be letting into the camp, would the person responsible for the camp also be documenting or doing background checks or query checks on the individuals that submit that they'd like to access and enter the camp? And for the folks that we do let into the camp, will there be anything done to, to document, take pictures of their photo identification? To, you know, have someone, an individual that's a real person and not a made-up name that would be held accountable for any damages done to the campsite or abutting properties? Especially concerned being on Anna Way where there's a path from the camping area that leads directly out to the end of Anna Way, which is, which is my, my property, and there's no barrier or fence or anything of that nature to, you know, keep any, you know, camper back from entering the property. So those are, those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the supplemental of a license is a good idea, we can certainly add that. But the query checks would only be required for employees, not for people just using the site, as they are with the Everett Leonard complex.
How are you gonna be taking deposits? Have we worked that out yet?
I haven't worked that out yet, yeah. The town of Athol has an online system, and you can actually see the calendar and which property is available, so I'm planning to contact Dave Small and see how they've set it up. Otherwise, the application I've drafted is just a Google form. The town's online permitting system has three departments that are set up now, building, fire, and Board of Health, and that's one method that we could use, an online permitting form would make things very easy. But they're only allowing three departments a year to, to sign on, so I don't know how far down conservation would be on that list. But I would like everything to be online and direct pay to the treasurer, if available.
And you could have credit card information, so should any vandalism or anything like that, Steve, is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah, yeah, for a deposit, you, yeah, I would think you'd want a credit card for that.
Recourse, just in case there is any damage to property or surrounding property?
Yeah, I, I don't have the ability to take credit cards for permits, so I don't know how we would do that. But direct payment, once, once we're online, that should work out that way.
And you'd be able to do it with the online permitting system?
Yes.
Anyone else in the audience? Yep, come on back.
Dewey Carter, again, from One Alice Road. I took a look, a look at the MassGov list of rules and regulations for state campsites. I know this is not a state campsite, it's a town campsite, but would you be willing to add some more regulations, like a noise ordinance from 10 to 2 a.m. or something? Obviously, there's nothing in there about music or, you know, loud noises, and you have the Reserve and Anna Way, you know, two, two neighborhoods with children that probably go to bed early, wake up early. It's just one more thing to consider, because I mean, noise travels, we can even hear Xfinity Center from, from where you live, so I'm sure we could hear campers as well. But there is an extensive list on the state site about how they regulate campgrounds, and maybe we can look to add some of those rules and regulations.
Yeah, I think a quiet hours.
Sure, yeah, we, there would be quiet hours, and the, the full list hasn't been drafted yet, but we, I, I've been to many of the state campsites, and would be drafting from, stealing a lot of their, a lot of their rules and regulations.
Does the Conservation Commission play a role in the sites that are gonna be operated and when these things will be open, or is it strictly the director's decision?
No, the Conservation Commission can set rules for their, for their property.
So, but, but as it is, it's, it's up to you?
Right now, they do leave that up to me.
Okay. Okay, anything further? Yep, come on.
Can, not to, I don't wanna micromanage this or anything, but can we, through the permit, involve the commission a little more in that when campsites are opened at the, you know, at the discretion of the commission rather than individual? I guess, I'm saying, can we get them more involved in this process?
I, I don't think that this board could make that kind of demand on the commission. That would be something that the Conservation Commission would have to do on its own.
Mr. Chairman, I, in the, in the request for the special permit, the application is from the Conservation Commission, not, not directly from the Asian.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Is it, is it fair to assume that CONCON has taken a vote on this, or, in their, I have to think they're
Not a formal vote.
But they're certainly, I trust, aware of it, and this is reflected But certainly, I trust aware of it, and this is reflective of their wishes.
I don't think it's in this board's authority to designate who will be allowed to make decisions based on that property. I don't think that's something we can do.
No, but at the end of the day, I mean, on a day-to-day basis, Jennifer is responsible for, be it the office, be it the properties, whatever else. But at the end of the day, just like we are, we rely on Paul for a lot of things. But it's our vote that is the final arbiter, if you will. And my sense is that the CONCON, well, if they haven't taken a formal vote, they're certainly aware of it, and if they had to, they could. But if there are issues, then those issues can be taken up, not only with Jennifer, but the commission itself.
Well, and the commission then would be the permit holder, to Kevin's point. We will issue the permit to the Conservation Commission, not to Jennifer as the agent. Right, Kevin?
That's right.
That's part of what...
Okay.
So maybe that would help clarify a little bit that the special permit is actually issued to the Conservation Commission.
Yep, come on up.
In regard to the thoughtful subject that Tom Jordan brought up about query checks, a year and a half ago, when we had our first meeting with Jennifer, when we found out that the town was purchasing this property, I had asked about the town's liability. God forbid there's an alleged sexual assault that happens on this property, a drowning in the pond or the river. Anything that happens, is the town now liable? And do we have enough coverage now that we're opening this new venue? Or is it covered under maybe, you know, recreation has the same kind of rules? Do we know for sure that this isn't going to increase our rates of insurance because we're adding like a whole different thing with fire? Suppose a fire does happen and houses get wiped out? Do we have enough coverage as a town? That's what I would be asking. Also, Jennifer mentioned that she, as an adult, does not want to be supervised by another adult. But she's older than 21. The only person 21 I would probably trust out there with a group of people is if he was a scout or she was a scout. I just think that you've... You're trusting too much in a young group of people going out there. And if you go to a public campground, you are supervised by adults if you are an adult. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. We need an adult to supervise adults because 21 is considered an adult. And I think you all know a lot of the drinking problems and things that people will try to come in. They might not get a permit. They might come in and they might just decide to have a party out there. And so you've got to consider the possibilities of that as well and the liability that goes along with that. So I would like to know, have an answer before you decide on this from town council perhaps. Are we covered in case of any scenario like this that could occur? Okay, thank you.
The property and all of the buildings have been insured since we purchased the property. So we have liability insurance.
Any further questions from the board or the audience?
Hi. Another request would be for some sort of a system of some sorts, whether it's a flag at the camp or some sort of notification to the nearby neighborhoods and the residents and the owners of those properties if there's, in fact, people camping during a certain period, time period. Because as residents, how are we supposed to know the difference between a camper and someone that's there that shouldn't be there? Someone like kids looking to party or, you know, someone there for not the right reasons. Thank you.
Jen, is there going to be some sort of calendar that we have online that we'll see?
Once we see online, there will be a calendar where people can check the dates of what's available and who's had.
And you said currently there are people just going in without notice? And are you getting reports on people going in there currently?
Not any issues.
One of the things we've talked about, I assume, also, but as part of this, you're going to actually issue a paper permit that could be posted since it's all going to be on these platforms. Can that be a requirement so that if there is a permit that's issued and it's not posted on the tent site, then clearly there's a problem? And whoever it is that is using it either, you know, gets thrown out? And again, I know the question is thrown up by doing... Again, that's something that perhaps on occasion, police could drive through and look for posted permits at each site and if there isn't one.
I think the police and fire are going to be notified. So if there's a loud, raucous party going on, they will either have the person's contact information who's responsible or it's an unauthorized, unpermitted event, in which case, either way, they can respond.
Correct, but we can require that they post the permit somewhere if you like.
So just for clarification, you do have a calendar that's web-based that will not only show the availability, but if it is already permitted for a certain day or days?
That's what we're hoping through the town online process. But right now, that's not available. So it'll just be the calendar in my office. And it'll be written down there.
So hopefully eventually. I know that the school department, they have an online calendar for all of the field usage and the gymnasiums and that kind of thing. So I'm sure that's what your plan is to get to that point.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Yep, come on in.
Just a question too, as to the current rules of the conservation areas are that you have to leave the property a half hour after dusk. So obviously with campers and overnight people, that's going to change. But what happens with the, say, a couple wants to walk out there at nine o'clock at night, but they don't have a camping permit, but they just want to walk out there? Is that going to be allowed since normally they would have to leave a half hour after dusk? Can just anybody walk out there now, any time of night, so that you could have walkers and campers and dog walkers and, you know, the like? So that's just a question I have.
It's my understanding the conservation rules will still remain in effect. Is that right?
So once again, that brings my point to the fact that who's going to monitor that? Who's going to tell the walkers at eight o'clock at night that you have to leave, but the campers are there? We need a monitoring system. We need a field agent. Please.
Do we have any further questions from the board or the audience? Peter, come on in.
Hi, I'm Peter Williams, one fifty seventh, Beta Ave, Trail Forty-Three, North Mass. And it is time, I agree, that around this time, if people want to go camping out in the town, they need to have adult supervision at times when there's kids around. They need to have adult supervision at times. And they need to follow the rules and regulations of the town rules when it comes to camping, to be camping, camp responsibly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Anything further? Okay. At this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm not bright enough to... I'm certainly not Solomon. But I'm just trying to find a way, this compromise that takes into account some of the considerations that have been aired, but allows us to go forward without restricting it. And I'm just wondering, Jennifer, on a practical basis, what's the likelihood in the next six months that these are going to be fully utilized? And the reason for... I'll think out loud here. The reason for the question is, is there a way of voting on a special permit that allows, pick a number, a maximum of half occupancy and with a commitment to revisit that in six months and amend it? So that, you know, these people are sure that there aren't going to be 32 people at Camp Eta Three? It'd be a maximum of 16. I mean, is there... Have you had enough inquiry that would make you think, no, this is going to be fully utilized right from the get-go?
I don't expect that to happen at all. I think a few scout groups might want to camp at Eta Three. Their troops seem to be between 10 and 15 kids, not the 25. You asked for the maximum capacity of those properties. That doesn't mean that's how many people will be there camping at any given time. But if you're limiting the occupancy, then that might cut a troop in half. And only half the kids can go camping and other kids can't.
And again, I'm just trying to think out loud here and touch a couple of keystones that have been raised. I don't think anyone has issues with scouts. So again, this is an emotion. I'm just kind of, as I said, thinking out loud. If we were to approve a special permit that limits, that is maximized at half the capacity, with the exception of scouting usage...
Yeah, I don't think we can discriminate against... That's been discussed as well. A few times.
Well, I...
Any scout out of a camping application who's not been a scout has been one or two people.
But I think by placing a short-term limit on this, it gives everyone an opportunity to learn by experience, both from the Conservation Commission's standpoint, but also from the butters that, you know, this may not be as much of a concern as that, you know, the unknown is right now. Again, just trying to find a compromise that satisfies both camps.
In that vein, are there certain properties that have been typically utilized a lot and others that are very rarely utilized that we can limit the number in terms of saying, "Six different sites"? There are three sites that you know have been active, that you're somewhat in control of?
Aside from Rose Farm, I only applied for the sites where people camp regularly. We have many other properties where people can go and where they can camp. But I didn't include them in this application. I've already limited the number.
Yeah, this application is for the sites listed. So I think changing that now is... I mean, I wouldn't be behind that.
I think, Joe, to your point, maybe not on a specific camping party. I'm not sure if that's the correct term. But as we've said, the Conservation Commission agent has the authority to say when a site is ready for camping. And that not only includes the outset... I would say that's not only includes the outset of, yes, the fire pit is installed and it's good to go. But if, in regards to upkeep or cleaning or anything like that, if it takes a little while to get it back to ready after somebody has been using it, then that's something that Jennifer would have kind of the ability to do and say, even if, and that may, to a point, if you wouldn't have groups going back to back to back to back to back and it wouldn't have time to... And it wouldn't be possible for you to keep up with it. So I think that in terms of long-term kind of capacity and usage, so to speak, I think that's a flexibility that Jennifer already has. I'm not sure if that's something that we would put in writing. But I think that's something that is within your kind of domain to kind of say that something's not ready and needs more time to be cleaned up or something.
Yeah, that was my question with the field too. I mean, if it's not mowed, then there won't be any campers.
Correct.
So it's...
And also, you have the rate schedule that the commission needs to establish. So that in and of itself can control, you know, demand as well. And it can cover any incidental costs that may be occurred through the town's, you know, insurance policy or anything else that may be a surprise down the road. You can adjust the rate schedule, you know, to accommodate those needs.
Eta Three is the only place with buildings or a bathroom. All the other properties are primitive campsites. You pack in and you pack out everything you have. There's nothing to really clean up after.
Yeah, my thought now is, I mean, there are people already using these without permits, without knowing who they are, you know, how long they're going to be there. This is trying to rein that in. I mean, that's my opinion on it, at least to an extent. Do we have any further questions from the audience? Just to be clear to everyone, I want to try to wrap this up in about the next 10 minutes or so.
Okay. Dan Paquelin, seventy-one North Wistus Street. With regards to the permitting process, I was actually a certified Girl Scout leader, okay? I had to be couraged for it. I had daughters in the scouting. I was a Boy Scout. With respect to the scouting, there was, obviously, it was a Girl Scout campsite. And it is chaperoned. It is controlled and under direct supervision of adults that know what has to happen and the best way to take care of situations. I've had to do that myself. I think when you take the facility that you're thinking of as a general camping facility, it's two different entities. And without having some kind of supervision, adult supervision or somebody to be a caretaker, if you will, I think you're begging for trouble. When you go, you take a group of scouts to a facility like that, there's no doubt that the adults are responsible for these kids. They're going to make it in and out. They're going to clean up. I know how it works. Been there, done it, okay? You cannot... It's a hopeful thing. But when you open it up to community camping and that thing... And I've been a camper all my life. I've taken my kids camping. Mostly all the campsites I went to had caretakers. Somebody to oversee and get the knuckleheads out of there when trouble started. You're not going to have that, that kind of supervision. There's no surveillance in terms of the acreage. You really don't know what's going on in there. And nobody's going to say, "Okay, I did that," when something bad happens and put their arm up and say, you know, because that's not the real world. I think we really need to table this for a little while, think about it, and put something budgetary in terms of getting a, at least, part-time overseer of that property, if not a full-time. We took a house down that had a caretaker place. You're opening it up to the community. We love scouting and, God bless them. But there is a chaperone entity in there. When you open it up to community, you know, to the public, you're not going to have that. And you can't just say, "We're going to hope that this is not going to happen" because bad things do happen, unfortunately. And nobody's going to take responsibility for it. And this is our concern as a butters. So I just, you know, if we can maybe make some kind of a request budgetary to implementing a position for somebody to oversee this, at least on a part-time basis. And one of the gentlemen over here made a great statement about, well, you know, raise a flag when you know somebody's going to be in there camping. We've got people from the outside that are coming in. I mean, you've got to have some way of knowing what's going on there. There aren't going to be overseers. My wife Ellen made a good point about the Rose Farm too. I mean, I get hay up to here when I walk out there. It's... You don't know, if there's nobody in that area, even if you mow it down, there's no supervision of these areas unless we create a budget. And let's go to the town to create a budget for that. So we don't have stupid things happening, something bad may happen. This is the time and the place to make sure it doesn't happen. So let's just try to think about that, you know, to be sensible about it, not rush into this. Put some monies aside. Get somebody who can, you know, whether it's two or three people. If it's a part-time... people, if it's a part-time basis or whatever, to, to at least safeguard the butters and the people that want to utilize these people, the places. The scouting, we love it. And, and can't, you know, you want to get community to camping, great. But you just can't rely on people to say, okay, I'm going to do my part and leave, because there's a lot of people that, that just plain and simple, they're not going to do it. And that, that's one of our concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One quick question. Phil, back before.
Sure.
There is surveillance of the property or are there any details?
Sure.
I think I heard, heard from each of you that people are there now and you're trying to reel it in by actually having permits. What evidence do you have that people are there now?
Is that your quick, I can have Jen come up here.
Anyone? Because I've never, I live right there, I've never seen. Can you say anybody?
The comment is about all conservation property?
No, the one I'm voting out.
Yeah, I don't know that people are, are camping at Edith Reed, but they are camping at Johnson Acres, the islands and Town Forest.
How do you know? Give me the question, how do you know?
Just from walking in the property. I mean, you can see areas where people have cleared some of the camp areas. It hasn't grown back in, so people are camping there. Other than the camping applications for those properties, then, yeah.
With all due respect to Jennifer and the Conservation Commission, after looking around and seeing the other places that excluded or that only included, we'll say scouts and youth groups, can we get a, an opinion from Town Council as to whether or not we're on the right path for this? Whether or not we can exclude or just make it available to scouts or scouting? That's it.
Okay, we're going to take the last question here.
Actually, Jennifer, there was vandalism there this year, right? And that's why you installed the cameras at the lodge?
Yes.
Okay. But that's after the fact. So if something happens, you can maybe see who did it, but it doesn't stop the act. My question to the board is, and you all have to ask yourself, do any of you feel some kind of pressure that you have to get this camping in this year for any reason? Do any of you feel pressured somehow because we bought the land a year ago and, oh, we have to make good use of it, even though it's a treasure just to walk in or fish in or kayak through? It's a treasure as it is. It doesn't increase its value because now we can camp there. And I ask you, if you were building a house, you would have to have everything up to code and an occupancy permit before you moved in. I'm asking you to consider this a house being built. It's not finished yet. Nothing's finished on this property. We need to install more safety regulations. Please consider putting this off until we get things. It's not, it's not going to, I mean, here we are in July. We've got a few more months, and as Jennifer said, maybe, you know, one or two other people other than the scouts may want to camp there. So I don't think it's going to kill anyone to wait until the spring, if that's how long it takes to get something at town meeting. So please consider just putting this off until we can get everything in place. Remember, it's the house that's unfinished and you can't move in yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, did you have anything else to add? So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, I moved to close the.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second to close the public hearing for special permit 487. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So discussion, anything further? So assuming, assuming it does go through, we do vote on this tonight and it does pass, what, what, what are we looking at for conditions?
I think this is a unique situation in that we're talking about a permit to allow our Conservation Commission, who is responsible for overseeing this property, to do it in a responsible fashion. I think we've gotten from the Conservation, through Jennifer, some significant steps in terms of identifying those rules and regulations as a starting point that they need to implement. I think this board should not necessarily be in a position to micromanage what those rules and regulations may be. And to the extent to which I understand Jennifer, in her capacity as the Conservation Commission, has ongoing rights to modify what rules and regulations would apply, I think we're dealing with the concept and it being comfortable that those, they're responsible parameters for which this property can be used. So I'm sort of, myself, at the point of saying, I don't want to get to the point of micromanaging that. I want to make sure, one of the things I want to make sure is that the board, the Conservation Commission and Jennifer have the flexibility to modify what's going on in that process. If it's, if it's stopping the process, if it's getting out of hand, they could say no more permits. If it's, rather than having this board try to figure out under what situations that should stop, I think we as a town board need to take deference to the Conservation Commission and understand that they are the ones literally responsible for this property and will take a proper, a proper action as it may be necessary. So I think our question is, is camping going to be allowed in the site? We've gotten some information as to at least the parameters of how it's going to be organized. There will be some security deposits, there will be a lot more than we had before, that we have that. But beyond that, to get into micromanaging it, I'm, I'm reluctant to go any further to do that at this point.
I tend to agree with you on that. One of the things I look at with an applicant as well is their flexibility, their willingness to, to work with the butters and the board. We've seen some applicants that do, some that don't, and I think everything we've asked has been brought to us. And, and Orrin, I completely agree, as far as micromanaging the Conservation Commission. I don't think that's something we should do or even, you know, are able to do at this Anyone else?
I think all of the Situation is very helpful. I think that.
Do we, do we need to put in some of the conditions, at least to the extent of the regulations that have been outlined for us? That we'll, we expect them to be followed as long as understanding that the Conservation will have an ongoing responsibility to review their own regulations and update them as may be necessary to, to secure the, the proper and safe operations of those campsites.
I, I completely agree with that. And I think that, you know, a couple of comments were made that the, the season is nearing the end and there's only been a few applicants. I think that with these few applicants and just the few sites that are going to be open, it will help, it will help Conservation determine steps forward as far as additional rules or, you know, maybe even additional deposits. I mean, I think that's, personally, I think it's the way to go.
Yeah, just to piggyback on, on Orrin's thought there of like rules and regulations, and we heard some tonight of, you know, kind of mimicking maybe some of the state's camping rules. I think for the Concom, to also take in consideration the way the property was purchased. So the grant, obviously, from what Jennifer has educated us on tonight, could impact the rules and regulations of what is and isn't allowable on the site as well. And what type of maybe rules can be applied either by the town or by the state or by the grant funding agency. So I think a lot of that will be in their court, knowing the ins and outs of those elements. You know, we, we are not well-educated on that and can't, you know, necessarily speak to that on their behalf.
I think one thing that we can add, and please stop me if I'm wrong, is some sort of quiet hours. I think that's, we've done that with, with other special permits. And I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's unreasonable. Did, the public hearing.
We also have the term, the term of period that's going to cover in the quiet hours.
Yeah.
Can we add the camping season too, or is that going too far?
I, I tend to think that's going a little far, but I, I mean, I'll defer to, to the majority here.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to see them, but I think given her the flex, given the Commission the flexibility, so if there's, they find they need more money and more security for how they're operating, they can increase those fees. I'd like to know as a baseline what they're looking at, but certainly, especially if they wanted to raise them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to stand in the way of them doing that and limiting, and then have to come back to get a raise, and that would make any sense.
Yeah, and I think the amount of applications that come in and how, again, how this is done, even in the coming months, it'll, it'll be a huge help with, with determining budgeting in the future for potentially getting somebody out there. Because I, I mean, I've spoken with Jennifer a little bit and from what she's said, I know she's, would love to have somebody out there, so she's not out there doing it herself. So the more information we can get to try to push for that budget as, as members of the town, I think would be good.
Do we have any, was there a suggestion, I think there was, it was April to November?
Yeah, April to November, yeah.
And was there some time, silent, quiet hours, is that in the regulations at some point? Were the quiet hours designated in the regulations we were provided?
Yeah, I think it was 10 to 7, or 10 to 8, yeah, 10 to 7.
To your, kind of to your point, Orrin, if we build that into the, the motion and the approval, then, then they're restricted to those times and they have to come back to us to amend the special permit. So she may decide, you know, maybe May to October is better, or the hours need to be more limited. You know, and if we build that into our, our vote, then it makes it more difficult for the Commission to do that.
Can we, can we build that in, Joe, actually, you would know this maybe from the past, can we build that in and, and allow it as a minor modification? You know, if, determined by the Conservation Commission to, to change that?
We could, we could set up regulations ourselves, but to be candid, I don't feel any more comfortable in, in setting up regulations than the Conservation Commission. I've got confidence in them, Jennifer, that, you know, and more importantly, they have, they will have the flexibility, if we don't carve things in stone, to react to their experience. So I'm more comfortable deferring to the judgment of the Conservation Commission as to how this should proceed. My, myself, the only thing I'd be interested, since there didn't seem to be any interest in, in allowing just half of the occup, half of the capacity, the only thing I'd want to put as a, as a stipulation is that these are the, the sites, these are the capacities until such time as they need to change, and then we'd have to do a modification then. But I think everyone's comfortable, I would say everyone's comfortable. The Conservation Commission appears to be comfortable with these sites and these capacities. So I think that ought to be the only stipulation we put in.
I agree with that.
And I think, speaking generally, I think something like 10 to 7 is a reasonable berth in terms of quiet hours. And the Conservation Commission could always choose to be, if it was worded by us, with quiet hours shall be at least this, the Conservation Commission should, could choose to make that more restrictive, should they wish.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with, I agree with Joe that, and Orrin, as far as micromanaging the Concom, I don't, the more I think about it, I think that should be determined by their rules and regulations.
In the discussion though, is it add value to at least set the general requirement that quiet hours shall be identified? Not necessarily put the stipulation on what they are, but at least they then have to at least comply that a set period is defined based on their own judgment.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
And I think if we consider usage of the site, the season, I don't think necessarily changes the use of the land. So I would kind of not put a restriction around that. I think that'd lead back to their due diligence.
The only question would be is if there is a higher fire risk in the fall, when's the lot of leaves?
But it's out of, I would assume the Conservation Commission.
For them to determine, yeah.
They manage the land, they probably are the spoken word for it. They're going to care the most over anything we set. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion with, do we agree on Joe's condition? What was it? The sites and capacities as, as listed?
Sites, capacities, and it requires quiet hours.
And the quiet hours to be established.
To be established.
I was just suggesting that we anticipate that the Conservation will establish appropriate rules to safeguard, you know, for the proper use of the property and to safeguards the interests of the, of the neighbors. And so that gives them something to go back to the Conservation Commission and, and have some dialogue. But that's, we're, we're understanding that they will do that as part of their, their charge. We can't require it, but as far as the permit, we, we expect to see appropriate rules and regulations implemented as may be necessary to safeguard the, the proper use and safety of the property.
Yeah, I don't think we can put that as a condition, but it's, it's.
But as an observation to add to Orrin's part, I don't think the discussion with the butters and the public ends just because of a vote. You know, I think the Conservation Commission has shown in the past that they're open to continue to make sure that the land is set up for the better use. So I don't think that ends regardless of the way the vote goes. You know, a little bit further, you know, I'd argue that, or I'd urge anyone that does have further concerns to keep raising them up and be part of the discussion.
All right, Paul's in your court, guys.
You can entertain the motion too, if you want to bundle everybody's comments. Steve, I can't remember both of them and, you know, the way they described it, so otherwise I would do that.
So I think that the, the condition we can put on is that the, the sites and capacities that we were given, any, any increase to those would have to come back to us for approval.
Right, but in, as we write the special permit, we will call out the sites specifically.
Yes.
So that'll be laid out, so any change, any additional sites in the future would have to result in a new special permit or a modification to this one.
Additional sites or increase to the occupancy?
Sites, capacities, and quiet hours to be defined. Were those the three?
Right, sites, capacities, and quiet, quiet hours to be determined by the Conservation Commission.
If you, if he has it written down, if Paul has it written down, Steve, if you just want to read off of his notes, bundle the three conditions into it.
Yeah.
So the motion is that.
Can we, can we say determined by the Conservation Commission? We can't. I mean, we can say reasonable quiet hours. I'm, I'm just thinking of, we can't put a condition that they have to go to the Commission and have a vote on that.
Well, the.
Under the condition that quiet hours are established.
Quiet hours are established, yeah.
Basically, they keep it generic.
Well, they're, they will establish rules and regulations, so with the understanding that the, the Conservation has and will establish appropriate rules and regulations, which would, which should include quiet hours as well as other safeguards to protect and preserve the property and, and the safety of the neighbors, of the neighboring property. So it's just, that's our expectation, that we're approving it with the understanding that the Conservation will be establishing appropriate rules and regulations relative to the use and operation of these sites. Including, we can say, including appropriate quiet hours.
And then if you just want to add in Joe's condition, then we'll just move on your motion.
Why don't I just make a motion? I move that we approve a special permit for the five sites as presented, limited to the capacities as presented, with the requirement that the Conservation. the capacities as presented, with the requirement that the Conservation Commission establish rules and regulations, including but not limited to quiet hours permitting and posting of a requirement to post a permit by any camper that has been permitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, who's second?
Kevin.
Kevin, okay.
Do you got it all?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Special permit 46, oh, sorry, 487 passes. Thank you, everyone. Now, we've already established our next two meetings.
And do we have any further business?
Joe, when I write this up this week, I'll run this, that language by you, if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Oh, of course, absolutely.
All right, do we have any further business, folks? Do we have any clue about going forward beyond the end of this, end of August for hearings, for meetings? Or is it productive at all?
Yeah, we just did August.
August 20th.
Yeah, do you, would you...
Do we want to go further than that?
I'm...
July 23rd, there's a hearing over not being a center for the Bay Road project and all sorts of stuff, right?
That's right.
Our policy.
Right.
Yep.
So right now, we have July 23rd, August 6th, and August 20th.
We can do September if you want.
Paul, is anything else coming in?
We have an application next week that's a cell tower located at the Bernie and Phil site.
Okay.
And then we have an application for a essentially short-term rental that came in last week, but because we didn't have the August dates, but we'll probably get them on the first August meeting.
Then maybe we can wait till at least the 6th, the meeting is the 6th, and try it again, because, yeah, and see what's coming up.
And see how the 23rd goes.
Yeah, because the next two weeks would be the day after Labor Day, and that may be tough for some people.
Yep.
So we may have to move it around. Let's see what's coming up. Okay.
There will be a week in September where I'm not available.
Yep, plus the Bay Road, that's going to be discussed.
Yeah, so the first week of September, I'm not available either, so.
What?
Yeah, that would be normal schedules.
The Bay Road, that's going to be discussed July 23rd, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, wait until we're there.
So do we want to do September?
Well, we can, we can wait.
Okay.
I guess, let's see what comes up. It's the first week of stuff anyway, so it's not the normal progression.
Well, let's, you know what, let's all think about it, and we have a meeting next week, so maybe we can do it next week.
And then next week, Bay Road, first week in August, probably those two you just talked about, Paul.
Right.
We may, we may have to schedule...
Yeah, exactly.
More meetings for that, so.
Yeah, at least as we know it as of today.
Yeah.
But you're right.
Yes. I say may, but we will have to schedule.
Anything else on the agenda for the 23rd right now? Or you said the tower?
The 23rd will be the, will be Bay Road, the telecommunications tower.
Tower.
And that's, the thing was, right, and then Cumberland Farms isn't until the end of August, so that's, that should be it unless an A and R comes in in the next couple of days, but...
Okay.
So we will have, the next, next week's meeting will be at the Media Center, right behind Home Plate, so it's...
All right, without any, any further issues, entertain a motion to move.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Easy to get that one, huh?
Anyone opposed?
Thank you all.